कत्रोड़िये परिसूत नामत्तुक मयमुंडाव्या
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
मार्क एड़ेदन स्वीशेषम
Gospel of God
पदिनारा मधिकारम पदिनांगाम वसलवश कत्रोड़िये परिसूत नामत्तुक मयमुंडाव्या
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord
अंडवरागिये यही सुकृष्ट वीर्तलंद पिन्नु तन्ने कण्डस शीशर्गले उरिसलर नम्बामल्पोणु निमित्तम अविश्वासत्तीयम इरुदय कटिनत्तियम कटिन्दु कुंडार
Lord Jesus Christ after his resurrection He saw his disciples We as a the harness of God and believe Here we book them
येसुन्डे प्रपु ओरु पगदी
The birth of Jesus Christ is in potion
अवर्ड़े वालर्पु ओरु पगदी
His growth also in one potion
अवर्ड़िये ऊळियम ओरु पगदी
His ministry was another potion
गत्समनैलेरिंदु अवर सिलुवेले जीवने विडु वरै ओरु पगदी
From testimony to his He has left his life on the crucifix potion
अदर्क पिन्नु अवर उयरोड़ि उल्लंबिपिदाविन समुद्धुके पोहुरै नर्दपित्तसैलगळ ओरु पगदी
After the after his resurrection What are the activities he did
ओरु पगदीकम ओरु मुख्यतोम्रकर
Each and every potion is important part
अद्वोले उयर्तलंद पिन्नु नर्दंदे सम्बवंगले कोंजो
After the resurrection it has something happen is very little
अंद उयर्तलंद पिन्नु नर्दंदे सम्बवंगले वरिष्ठ पड़ति नाम चल्ले मुड़ियो
We can also order all the things which what are the things happen after the resurrection
अवैविलिले अवर सिलमुखिमान कारिंगले दान्च सिद्ध
He did some important thing in that
गलिलियावुकु पोनार
He went to Galilee
तम्म्डे शीशर्गले कागु पूटपट्टा अरे कुले पोनार
He went inside the locked room for the disciples
तोमावु कागु ओरिविस सिद्धरिष्णम आनार
He has appeared to Thomas for one time
अनेह आयरंगले कु दरिष्णम आनार
He has appeared to many thousands of people
500 बेरु कु मरियमान बेरु कु दरिष्णम आनार नो रोशनर
There is a lot of God at the day appeared into more than 500 people
अदर्क पिन्नु अवर्ले विट्टा अवर एड़तु कोलपड़ुगरार वाकततंगल कुड़ुगरार इभिति पलकारिंगल नर्कर
After they give us ascended up and gave promises so many things have happened
इंगे नाम ओरु मुख्यमान ओरु पगदी वासिक
Here he becomes in the important potion
अवर उल्लकत्तले गिरुंदु बुलुद्दे इलाव्टाल मर्नत्तुक मुंदु पलक प्रसंगंगल अवर सिद्धिरकर
When he was in the when he was in the earth before his death he did so many things
अनाल उयर्तलंद पिन्नु तम्म्डे शीशर्गले अवर ओरु एड़त्ले कटिन्दु बुलुगर
After his resurrection he rebuked his disciples in one place
नम्बामल्पोण अवर्ले अवर कटिन्दु कुंडार
Those who did not believe him he was rebuked
अदेह नर्दले पिन्नु वारिपोन शीशर्गले तेड़ि पुई अवर्ले मर्बड़िया लालित्ते आडुगले मेक्का कुड़ियो ओरु ऊळित्ते कुड़ुकर
Though the disciples went backsliding even though he went and went back them and gave the ministry again
अनाल इंगे रंदु कारियते कुरित्ता अवर कटिन्दु बुलुगर
Here the two things God is rebuking
नाम इन्ने के इदन नाम सिंधिके पो
Today we are going to meditate this
उयर्तलंद येसुन्डि कटिन्दु बुलुदल
The rebuking of the resurrected Christ
उयर्तलंद येसु येन्द कारियते कुरित्ता कटिन्दु कुंडार
What things about the recent Christ
नामुड़े बूमीले पलकारिंगले कुरित्ता सिलर सियिमुरुद्दे नमकु विरोधमागै इलाव्टाल नमकु पिटिक्यादे नमके एदरमारान असैलगळ नर्दएरुमुरुद्दे नामुड़े एदरकरोम कटिन्दु बुलुगर
In our life also in the world some people did something against us and speak something against us we also rebuked them
ऊळित्ते विट्टे अवर्ले मिन्न मिडिक्य पोणु कागे अवर अवर्ले कटिन्दु बुलेला
Jesus did not rebuke them because they left their ministry and went for fishing
अन्द मर्दलित्ते सभित्ते सत्यमुन्नु के अवर अवने कटिन्दु बुलेला
He did not rebuke them because he promised him and denied him and cursed him
अनाल रंदु कारियतु मत्रो अवर्ले कटिन्दु कुंडार
But only two things he rebuked them
ओरु अविश्वास
One thing that their unbelief
रंदा अवधे अविश्वास
Secondly the harness of their heart
पारंगे पिन्नु वारिपोणु के कटिन्दु बुलेला
See he did not rebuke them for the backsliding
अंद सुनले मत्तिला अवंगा बिया वेलगी पुई मिन्न मिडिक्य पट्टांग अनाल अवंगले तेड़ि पोरार
Because of the situation they also gone astray and they went for fishing they go Jesus sought them
अवंगले पुई तेड़ि पोरार
He sought them and went
मर्दलिच्छता अवना तेड़ि पोरार
One who denied also Jesus
अनाल इंद रंदु कारियत मत्रो रम्बा रफ़्फ़ा डिल पणर
But these two things were roughly dealt by him
उयर्तलंद येसुन्डि कोबम तुक्कम इंदिले वेलिपड़ुगर
It shows the anger and the sorrow of the risen Christ
ओरु अविश्वास
One is unbelief
इरंदा अवधे अविश्वास
The harness of their heart
इंद रंदुमे आविकुरिय वाल्कैन बिलचीकुरिय कारण
These two things are the fallen nature of the
इंद रंदुमे ओरु मनिदनै उयर्तलंद अनुवतुकु कोण्डु बोहोड़ामल तडुथ्तु बुड
These two things will not take a man to the resurrected state
अनप्रिनाल्दा येसु इंद रंदु कारिंगले मत्रो वलियुरुति अवर्ले कटिन्दु कुंडार
So that means Jesus also insisted these two things and rebuked them
इदन नाम इन्ने के सिंधिकल
Today let us meditate this
अविश्वासमय इरुदय कटिन्दुम नमकुले इरुकुम अनाल नाम देवीगमाय वाला मुड़ियाल
If we have the unbelief as well as the harness of God we cannot believe divine
रोलिंग राजावु कुड़ा रकला
Even you may be a king
अनाल इरुदय कटिन्दुम रिंदा सिंगासनत्तले नेडित्तु कुमुड़िया
But if you are having the harness of God you cannot stand in the
अनप्रिनाल्दा अविश्वासम रिंदाल येन्द सैलमे नर्देरमुड़िया
If you are having any unbelief no action will be happen
अनाल ताये सु अविश्वासम नो नी अवर रम्बा टेंशन आइक
So when Jesus heard about the unbelief he was so tense
अंद पेंगल वन्नु चोनांग नांगल येसु वे पाव्तो अवर गलिलियावुकु पोरार
Those women said we have seen Jesus he is going and do Galilee
पूटपट्टा अरे कुले येसु वंदार नांगल वरै पार्तो
Jesus came in the locked room we have seen him they said
नांगे एमओ ओरु कु पोनो अवर इंगल कोडकु नर्दंदु वंदार्नु वन्नु चोनां
They also said we went to the city of M.O.S. Jesus walked with us
ओरु कारित्ते केतनसाच्यु वनो
For one thing how many testimonies we needed
एतनसाच्यु वनो रंदु अल्लादे मूंद
Two or three testimonies are needed for a matter
अलाकाव चोलरांग अपूटपट्टा अरे नांगल पात्तो येसु वंदार उंगले समाधान चोनार्ना अन्त तोमा अल्लाह वैलय पारियांडा
Beautifully they said the locked room they have Jesus came we have seen him but they did not believe
एमओ ओरु कु पोनो अवंग रंदु ओरु वन्नु चोनांग यो यंगलोड़िए नर्दंदु वंदार अप्पड़ि अप्पत्त पिट्टार रे मरंझितार
The disciples they also went to the M.O.S. they said that Jesus came with us and broke the bread and everything they did not believe
अदर्क कारिया केट्टा अवंगल चोनांग इदन ब्रम्मले एदो पेसरांग कुड़िये मनिकनका वंदारा इवर वाकले या कटिसले अप्पत्त पिकुमुरुद्दा न देरिंजिदा मरंझितार
So the people are so there so many ever see also walk with them but they did not see when they break when he was breaking the bread they saw
इलाल्ना नांग कलरे कु पोनो अंगत तूदनु कुकांदुर्ना ऐडिया पात्ता तोटकरमार रिंदार नाम अवंगल्ट्ते पेसन कटिसले रबीन नो ने मरिया मरियाले नर रबीन ने अवर उड़ने गलिलियावुकु पोंगन नो ने अदेह नम्मा मारे
They did not believe when Mary also said all then made matter when I went to the tomb he was sitting outside I thought as a gardener and when I call him when he called him with Ruby Mary I call him Ruby
इबिडिया विट्टा एन्न सिवांग तिरिमा
If they will go leave it what they will do
एन्न नर्दको
What will happen
इंद पदनारु वर्ले उनरु दुरु जोलुआ अवंग एदो चोलरांग नाम पाकलां चुरिरो
They will say something they are saying we have never seen
अब मुलु उल्लकम येसु वीर्तलंद वेल लेंगर दे एन्न सियो ओरु तवरान ओवो देसम परपपुड
There will be a wrong doctrine will be spread out that Jesus did not resurrect him
यर्कनवी येसु वीर्तलंद वेल इन्नु सोल्ड्रु कागे येरोधनुड़ि आड्कल वन्दु पोर्च अवर्लुकु पनत्तो काय कुड़ुत्ता न बाइबिल्लर के
Already the people of here also gave the money to the soldier they have to say Jesus did not resurrect
अवंग मोदलिये कास लम पेसिटांग
Already they spoken about the money
नांग तूइ इट्तुनो अवंग आलंग वन्नु त्वीट पिटांग निंग सोलिरे When we were sleeping नांग सुनले आजेस्ट पनिरो एलाह अवंग पेसिटांग
They also talk we will adjust the situation you tell them when they were sleeping they came and took the body
मथैयु 28 12 13 निंग इदन पाकला
Matthew 28 13 14 you can see
12 13
12 and 13
पारंगे पनत्ते वांगिकुंडु 15 वसनत्तले अवर्ला पुरिये सोनार इंद पेच्चि युद्रकुले इन्नाल वरिक्य प्रसत्तमाय रुकर 15 वसनत्तले चोलिर
So this saying is commonly reported among the Jews until now
अदनाल्दा इन्ने की युद्रगल येसु वीर्तलंद एन्न सियल नम्बवे इल्ल
So that means the Jewish people they did not believe even today the resurrection
उल्लकत्तले अवम एन्न सोल्ड्रान इलियो तन्नुड़ि जनंगल नम्बनुंगरु कागे येसु अवर्लुकु मुन्नाले वेलिपट्टे अविश्वासत्तिक कटिन्दु कुंडार
Whether the world is believing or not in front of his own people Jesus appeared them and rebuked their harness of their heart
अविश्वासम ओरु विश्वासीकुले वरुमुरुद्दे अंडवरै आचरिय पड़दार
When the believer gets an unbelief Jesus himself wonders
एनाल अवना लालित्तु कुरार
Because he knew him
अवना वेरु बिरित्तु कुरार
He separated him
अवनुड़् दु पेसिरुकर
He has spoken him
एदादु ओरु त्र रचिपुंग नर्दकुमुरुद्दे उन्न सुकम इलाव्टा विदुतले एदादु उन्न नर्दंदु अवर रचिक पड़ा
Whatever the things are when you deliverance or anything happen is so safe
इप्पडिपट्टा मंशन तिड़िर्न अविश्वासम आपुमुरुद्दे अंडवर आचरिय पड़ा
Such kind of when he goes another unbelief Jesus also wonders
मार्क 6 6 इंगे पाकला
Mark 6 6 we can see
येसु अविश्वासत्त बात्ता आचरिय पट्टार
Jesus also went about by their unbelief
नान्दान अप्पडिन्नु चोना कुड़ा अवंग नम्बले एंगर रुपात्ता आचरिय पट्टार
Jesus marvel about their unbelief
अवंग रम्बा विश्वासीय
They were also unbelievers
इरंदा अवंग पुरुसाइ पुन्ना अवर पात्रुकर
Because newly they have seen him
कदलन अवर नर्दंदु वंदा कुड़ा अवर पात्तित्ते अवंग येसु चोला एन्न सोनांग विशास नंदन चोना
Even though he was walking on the sea they after seeing him they said only the spirit
अदनाल्दा ओरु विश्वासीय ओरु ऊळिय कारणो अविश्वास बुड़ुमुरुद्दे अंडवर आचरिय पड़दार इन्ना इत्नो उर्सी एम्बल नल्ला पिन्नाल्ला वन्नु टिप्पा एन्न सिया अविश्वासम आमा रिक
Whenever a believer or a servant of God when we get an unbelief Jesus has some powers
इंदिकेतन वेर अविश्वासमाय वाल्दु कुंडरुकर
How many of are living unbelieved today
इंद वाल्कैकि पेरे विश्वास वाल्कैदा
This life is called as a life of faith
उयर्कारमात्रम इल्ल विश्वासीय ओरु विश्वासत्तला वाल
Even not only the servants of God even the believers also live in a life of faith
नम्म्डि पेर इन्नधे विश्वासीय
Our name is believer
नम्म्डि बेसिक कांसेप्ट ओरु विश्वासम दा
Our basic concept also is
विश्वासम इल्लामल देवुनुके प्रियमाय रुकुड़ाल ओरु कारियम
It is impossible to please go without faith
अनाल्ले इंद जनंगल तन्ने पिन्नु बट्टिवरुरुरु जनंगल अविश्वासत्तल वरुमुरुद्दे अंडवर आचरिय पड़दार
So the people those are following when they go under unbelief Jesus marvels
मुदल अवधे अविश्वासत्तलाल वेलेगर थीमेगले नाम पार्क
First of all let us see the evil thing which happens regarding this unbelief
इलाल्ना विश्वासत्तलाल ओरु अविश्वासीय पोरुदुनुड़िया वेलेवे एन्नु पाक
Let us also see what is the cause or the reason for the unbelief
मथैयु 13 58 ले पार्कुमुरुद्दे अविश्वासम इरुकुरु एड़त्ले येसु विनाल अर्पुदम चय्यक मुड़िया विलाई
The place where there is unbelief Jesus couldn't do any miracle they in Matthew 13 28
मथैयु 13 58 अंगे चोलपट्टरुकर दे अवर्लुड़िया अविश्वासत्तलाले अवर अंगे अर्पुदम चय्यक कुड़ामल एन्ड चोलिर
It is suitable because of their unbelief Jesus couldn't do any miracle there
अविश्वासम येन्द रुत्लला सैलबड़ुगरुद्दे ओ क्रिएशी आरम्यकरुद्दे अंगला अर्पुद नर्दकार
Wherever the unbelievers are started doing that work there will be no miracle there
इंगे विश्वासीकर पेरले रुकला
You may be in the name of a believer
अनाल
But
अविश्वासम गरुद्दे उंगलुकुले पदिंद्रुंदाल वेल नर्दकार
If you are having the unbelief in you there will be no miracle
इन्ने केतन वेर अविश्वासत्तल माटीरुम
How many of are insane in unbelief today
अंद टाइम कुल नमन नर्दकलान नामुकु कोंचो अब्दी सलासला पुरुद्दे
If that is not happening within the time we also get some
अंद एदर्बात्ता टाइमले अदन नर्दकलान नो ने नमकु ओरु कलक्का वर
We also get some trouble within the time what we expected that is not happening
अनाल ओरु विश्वासी एन्न सिकुड़ा विश्वासीकरवन पदरान
Your believer will not be confirmed
ओरु विश्वासीकरवनुकु पदट्रमेवरार
The believers will not be confirmed
एन्न नर्दंदालो अवम एर्या अर्ब
Whatever it may happen will be very quiet
अवंगुकुले पदट्रमेवरार
He will not get any comfort or that trouble
अवनुकु पेर इन्नधे
What is his believer
इंगे चोलपट्टरुकर दे येसु विनाल कुड़ा अवर्लुड़ि अविश्वासत्तिनिमित्त अर्पुद चय्यमुड़ियल
Because even Jesus couldn't do any miracle because of their unbelief
ओरु अर्पुद कागे नमकात्तेरु कुमुरुद्दे अंद रुत्ला अर्पुद नर्दकलान ना नमक कटिन्दु बुल्ला पड़ु
If we are waiting for the miracle there is no miracle happen we are also rebuked
इंगे ओरु अर्पुद एदर्बात्ता कात्तेरु किंग
You are waiting for a miracle and waiting
इतरमिनी अदन नर्दकुन एदर्बात्ता किंग
You are waiting at this time it will happen
अदु अंद अर्पुद उंगले तेड़ि वरुद्दे अदु उंगलाले पेट्टुकुला मुड़ियल
The miracle is come seeking you but you cannot receive it
अब अदर्क कुड़ुकरुरु निंग सोलर
What one who is wanting
एनाल्ला वन्नु दंके कर
Why it is not coming
उन्न तेड़ि वरुकर अर्पुदत्ते उन्नुड़ि अविश्वासत्तलाले येतनियो दरनी गलंदु कुरांग रे निंग इंद माले वेलिले सिंधिले कुंडोरवे
Today evening you have to come bring in your mind so many times last year miracles because of your unbelief
अदु उन्न तेड़ि वर
It may come seeking you
एन्ड्राल तोड़कत्ले विश्वासले रिंदुनालो उन्न तेड़ि ना वर
Because you were in the belief in the well it makes
अर्पुद तेड़ि वरो अनाबटु निया दे करक्तर रिसीपन
The miracle may come seeking you but rightly you got received
अदनी विश्वासीकमय निंग अंद रुत्ले विट्टित्ति चोना अर्पुद नर्दकाम
If you don't believe it and live it means the miracle will not happen that time
अविश्वासत्तिकुरित्तीय येसु कटिन्दु कुंडार ना तन्नाल अर्पुद चय्यमुड़ियामल जनंगल अविश्वासीलाई पोइत्ता
Because the people are so couldn't get the miracle Jesus couldn't do any miracle there
मथैयु 19 अमरियारा 20 वसनत्तले पार्कुमुरुद्दे अविश्वासत्तलाले पिशास तोरत्तमुड़ियामल पुईविट्टा पिशास साई तोरत्तमुड़ियामल पुई
Matthew 17 20 Jesus couldn't cast out the devil's because of their unbelief
मथैयु 17 19 20 इंद वसनंगल्ले नमो पार्कला
Matthew 17 19 20 these verses we can see
ओरु पिशास पुरिच्छ विदुले वोड़ो नियम सीशर्गल अंडवट्टे केकर
The disciples also asking the Lord Jesus Christ the devil possessed child cannot be revealed
एनान्डवरै एंगलाल कुड़ामल पुईच्छ
Why Lord we couldn't do that miracle
उड़न अवर एन्न सोनार
What they said
अविश्वास
Because of your unbelief
अब अविश्वास रिंदा अर्पुदम नर्दकार विशास ओरु वाड
If you are having the unbelief the miracle will not happen the devil also will not go
इंदिकेतन वेरुके इप्पडिपट्टा कट्टुगल अर्कपड़ामल उंगुड़ि अविश्वासत्तलाले सिक्कीरुकर
How many of are also bound with the unbelief your bondages are not true
अविश्वासम नमकुले ओरु पुल्लाद तन्मय खोंडु वंदु
The unbelief will bring an evil nature to us
इन्ने केतन वेरुके इप्पडिपट्टा ताकुदल रुके
How many of are such kind of attack in you
येन्द वेरु कुल इप्पडिपट्टा पोराटंग रुके
How many of are such kind of struggle in you
पिशास बोहादु कु कार्म एन्न गरुद्दे नान इन्ने के चोलित्तो ओरु अविश्वासत्तलाले वेलेवे गल उंगुले चोलर निंग इदन सरिपड़ित्ति कुल
I will tell you the cause of the unbelief today you have to make right yourself
अविश्वासत्तलाले पिशासुगल ओड़ा विलाई अविश्वासत्तलाले अर्पुदंगल नर्देरमल पुईविट्टा
Because of the unbelief there is no miracle happen as well as the devils did not go
एबरेरुकलन नेरुबम 3 मधिकारम 10 9 वसनत्ते पार्कुमुरुद्दे
Revelation Hebrew 3 19
अंगे एन्न चोलपट्टरुकर
What did they say they
अवर्गलुड़िया अविश्वासत्तलाले अवर्गल इलैपार्दले प्रवेशिक्य कुड़ामल पुईविट्टा
They couldn't enter into the rest because of their unbelief
अविश्वास रिंदा इंद उल्लकत्तले उनके इलैपार्दल रुकादे अदर्त नित्य इलैपार्दल कुल उन्नाला प्रवेशिक्य
If you are having the unbelief you cannot have any rest in this world as well as in the eternity you cannot go into rest
रंद्य इलैपार्दल
There are two kinds of rest
इंद बूमीले रंद्य इलैपार्दल
There are two rest in this world
उन्नु उड़ने इंस्टेंट आकटाकुड़ियो ओरु रेस्ट
One is the rest where instantly we get it
चेन्नरत्ल वारंगल नान उंगुले के इलैपार्दल तरु
Come and me I'll give you rest
रंदा अवधे यन नुकत्ते येतुकोल अप्पुरु उन्न आत्मावक इलैपार्दल
Secondly take my yoke you will get the rest for your soul
मूंद्र अवधे नित्य इलैपार्दल
Thirdly the eternal rest
इंद रंद्य इलैपार्दल ले मंशनकु ता इलैपार्दले प्रवेशिक्य कुड़ियो वायपु कटाक
Only a man has these two rests will get the two entered in the rest
प्रसंगमनुपत्ता अब्दी ताले गले चुटित्ते तिरिपि मुन्नु अविश्वासत्तल अडि पट्टरुकुड़ा कावनमार
You should be careful while the message
एतन नमकु तियावियान लान तरुवर अनाइदिल्ले नान ओन्नुमय नर्दकार
God will give everything God will meet all of our needs if we don't have this means nothing
इम्मी कागे यार येसु पिन्नु बट्टिवट्टा दिर
Don't follow Jesus for this life
एबरे यन मूंद्र पत्तमुद्दले अवर्लुड़ि अविश्वासत्तलाले इलैपार्दले प्रवेशिक्य कुड़ामल
Hebrew 3 9 because of their unbelief they couldn't enter in the rest
अंद अविश्वासम वंदा उंग इरुदयम पुल्लाद आई मार
If you get that unbelief your heart will become evil one
कोंच अविश्वास
अदकु विट्टु विट्टु कुड़ुत्त पारंग You live for a small unbelief
अदु उंगल तेरियो उंगुड़ि इरुदयत्ते पुल्लाद इरुदयम आम माट्टी उंगल केटुकुले लित्तु
It will also make your heart as an evil heart and take you to evil nature
अदु देवन विट्टू उन्न वेलिया विट्टू बेरो
It will take you from God
एप्पुनि अविश्वासत्तिक एटंगुड़ुकरियो ओ इरुदयत्तु पुल्लाद आई माट्टी उड़ने उन्न अप्पडिया देवन विट्टू वेलिया स्लिप्पनि
Whenever you give room for the unbelief it also make your heart as an evil one and take you out of God
एबरेर एबरेर 3 12
अविश्वासम उल्ला पुल्लाद इरुदयम
देवन विट्टू वेलेगरु केदुवान अविश्वासमान पुल्लाद इरुदयम एन्ड चोलपट्ट
It is said by evil heart of unbelief it departing from the living God
देवन विट्टू वेलिया बुना अवे एन्न आवा
If a man go out of God what will happen
निंग एप्पुन वेलिया वरुन अवे वीट पनिट्टी एरुकर
He says wait when will you depart
अंद पादुकाप्प वालेत्तु निंग वेलिया वरुमुरुद्दे उन्न तट्टिरो
When you come out of the safety ring it will attack you
अंद अविश्वासम उंड इरुदयत्त कड़ुत्ते देवन विट्टू उन्न वेलिया कुंडु
That unbelief will also spoil your heart and take you out of God
इन्ने केतन वेर इप्पडिपट्टा अविश्वासत्तलाले ताकपट्ट
How many of are also attacked by this unbelief today
इलाल्नि निंग शरियान वतुत्तले पुरिंदु वल्ला वेन्दिदे
It is necessary you have to understand the right manner today
ओरु अविश्वासत्तलाले अर्पुदंगल नर्देरम
One thing the miracle will not happen because of the
रंदा अवधे पिशासुगल ओड़ा
The devil will not go because of the unbelief
मूंद्र अवधे
Thirdly
सोलंग इलैपार्दले प्रवेशिक्य मुड़ियामल पुईविडो
We cannot enter into the rest
नांग अवधे देवन विट्टू वेलिया उन्न कुंडु
Fourthly you will depart from God
आइंद अवधे
Fifthly
उन्न नर्गत्तुकु ओरियनाई माट्टी
It will make you as a man of help
वेलिपड़ुत्तल 24 अमरियारा 8 वसन
Revelation 21 8
अविश्वासीयुन अंगे एन्न एंग बुरांग वासी वासी वास अविश्वासीयुल पोवेंडी एनान एधे
The unbeliever they were they have to go
अवन एंगु कुड़ु विचेत्रु लास्टल
Where we can take
इंद इलैपार्दल नित्य इलैपार्दल ले पोकुड़ाम अप्पडिये नर्गत्ले अवना पात्रणाई माट्टी
It will not take you to the eternal rest but it will take you to the eternal health
इदन इंग रल्ला पुरिंजिकित्ते नम्म्डि वाल्कैले येन्दंद बुगदीला नमा विश्वासम आसैलपट्टोंग रे 6500 अविश्वासत्तिकु वेलगवे
So we have to search ourselves in our life what are the things what are the potion we have also believed we don't have any we have any unbelief we have to come out
इप्पडियो ओरु विश्वासी अविश्वासीय आमार
How a believer become an unbeliever
एप्पुरुद्दे
When
ओरु कुड़मत्तले रुकर
He is in a family
अवंग मनिवी रुके पुल्लेगल रुके
He is having the wife and children
पुरुष रुका पुल्लेगल रुके
He is having husband and children
नल्ला पेरेंट्स लाई रुकांग
Very good parents are having
एल्लामे नल्ला रुके
Everything is good
अनाल इवनुके एप्पडिति तिड़िनी अविश्वासी आमार
How suddenly he became an unbeliever
मुदलम तीमति आइंदा मधिकारम 8 वसनत्तले
First team with you 5 8
तन सोंदा कुड़मत्ते विशारियामल पोनाल अवना विश्वासीयुल एब्डिमारीवा कट्टावन आमार
If a man don't take his own family he will become he will worse than an unbeliever
अवंगु उल्लक प्रकरमा येन्न मेनम वसदी वायपु रिंदालो तन सोंदा कुड़मत्ते अवनाल शरियान वतुत्ले कंट्रोल पन्नी इलाव्टाल अद विशारिच्छ अद पादुकत्तु परामरित्त शरियान वतुत्ले नर्दत्ता विट्टाल अवनु पेर इन्नधे अवे एब्डिमारीवा अविश्वासीय आमार
Whatever facilities are there all the manifestation everything we have in the world we don't take care of his own family he became worse than an unbeliever
इन्ने चोलपट्टा अविश्वासीयुल एंग बुरा अदर्त लो स्टेज कुल
He will go to the low stage than an unbeliever
मुदलम अविश्वासत्तिक मर्दलिकर रंदा अवधे अविश्वासत्तम मर्दलिच्छ नान अवंगु पेर इन्नधे अविश्वासी अविश्वासत्तले रिंदु केल बुना एन्न अविश्वासीयुन कट्टाव
He is denying the faith as well as he is worse than infidel
तन्नुड़ि पुल्लेगल विशारिक
He has to take care of his own
तन्नुड़ि मनिवी विशारिक
He has to take care of his wife
तन्नुड़ि पुरुष विशारिक
He has to take care of his husband
विशारिक न एन्न रुत
What is that inquiry
एंग एंग बुना एतरमिनी को वंदन अंद विशारिपना चोल्डन बास्टर चोल्ड
It is not that far that you go and what time you will come like not like that
एब्डिर किंग
How are you
एन्ड लल्ला रिकिंग
Where are you done
चाप्डुंग ओरु विशारिप देवीगमान ओरु अन्बान विशारिपुल नान निंग एन्न विश्वासी
Divinely we don't have that inquiry means what are what can a believer are you
ओरु कुड़मत्तले अदु देवीकत्त कुंडु वर
That has to bring in a family the divinity
इप्पडिय अविश्वासीय आमारीट्टा बरगे
After you become an unbeliever
अवंगु इंद उल्लकत्तल बाकरुद्दे ओन्नुमय सुत्तम आतर
Whatever he sees the world will be pure from the
यार बात्तालो उन्नुकु कट्टावन आन तेरिवा कट्टावला तेरिवा यारु शरियल लंगर ओरु मनपान्म अवुनुकुले वंदु
If you see anybody or any woman or man everybody will look at him
अवंग नापरी योक्यम
Whether they are good
अवंगु तेरियादा
Don't I know them
नल्लादा रिंदुर्पा इंद अविश्वासम वंद तन्नुड़ि कुड़मत्ते विशारिक्य अव्वय अवन अविश्वासील कट्टावन आय पोय इप्पय एल्लारी कोरस
He might be a good man after he get the unbelief for him he will be blaming everybody and he will blame everybody
तीत ओरु 15 ले इंद वार्ते पार्कला
Tightest one 15 we can see
अंगे एन्न चोलपट्टरुकर
What did they say they
सुत्तम उल्ला उनके सहलम सुत्तमार
For a pure man everything will be a pure
ओन्नुमय सुत्तमार अद अविश्वासी अवंगु ओन्नुमय येन्न बात्तालु कुट्टन न तेरि
The unbeliever everything will become impure and evil
नल्ला पुरिंजिक
You understand well
ओरु रश्या कार राकेटले निलवुकु पोनान
A Russian he went to the moon and
एल्लान चुटि पात्ति अरिंग वंदित
After he went through everywhere and came down
एब्डिर रिंदुद्दे
How is what was
वानम बंडलम एप्पडिर रिंदुद्दे
How was the sky space
निलवले काली डुत्ते कालीड़िय एडुत्त विच एब्डिर रिंद्चिन नान टिप्पी
Put on a step on the moon how it was
अन्चनान
He said
कोडिकनकान माइलगल कप्पाल पोनै तेड़ि पार्तै इरेवन एंगुम कानवले
I went beyond millions of miles I saw God everywhere but I did not see
एल्लार्थिल तेड़ि बात्ता नान राकेटले कोडिकनका पुई पात्ता यार कानो अब्दी ओरु त्र कड़ेवे कड़े
There is no God like that I went millions of miles apart and saw
एनाल अवे यार रशीन यार ओरु नाटिकन कड़वुल लिल्ली न चोल्डर कम्युनिशो कोल्ल
He is an atheist he will say there is no God
American Armstrong पोइट्वंदा
Armstrong went
American पोइट्वंदा
The American went
अंग पोय अवन ओरु राउंड एडिस्ट वंद
He also went around and came
कटांग
They were asked
उंगुड़ि पेट्टी एन्न
What is your
कोडिकनकान माइलगल पुई बंदु पात्तै इरेवनुड़ि सिस्टीप एव्वल अलाका रुकन what is what kind of very beautiful is the creation of God I went beyond millions of miles kodi kanakana milegal and the irayavunadiyipadipandaspace what there is a space and all the creation of God is how beautiful for a pure man everything will be pure for the unbeliever nothing will be pure if you bring the chip Jesus himself was brought here they have said against not to seeing Jesus he is a leader of the devil they said now we have come to the state so for the unbeliever everybody they are not pure on him so after the resurrection Jesus rightly came and rebuked the unbeliever Thomas which who will you carry on don't be an unbeliever be a believer he said you think about it you put my put your finger in my rib see what kind of a pathetic condition he is seeing again and the eat in a lot and the the score also found you see that where is your unbelieve taken so don't be an unbeliever be a believer Jesus talk to your father if you believe a son will be healed after hearing that he was bruised he has shed tears and Lord please help me to remove my unbelievable mark one twenty four mark nine twenty four he cried we short and sweetly we also pray not remove my unbeliever what is the eyes of faith do you know whatever is not faith whatever will not happen it will happen it will look and do that is very important so that Jesus rebuked the unbeliever how many of faith as well as how many of having because there is no miracle happen in your life because of your unbeliever because of your unbeliever because you and your family has to go away from God that is because of your unbeliever because you and your family has to go away from God that is because of your unbeliever their life of unrest has brought in you that is your unbeliever because you got the unbeliever you cannot inquire because that unbeliever is rooted in you know nothing is pure on you that unbeliever is in you it is also take you to the hell Jesus also rebuked about the unbeliever secondly Jesus rebuked about the harness of the heart these two are the powers against Christianity it will not appear out but it is also power hidden in each and every man only we can find out through the action you can also find out the tree by the fruits so we can see the unbeliever by the speech next we can see in the action so many lackness have found the only goddess revealing these two matters but the father was a man who acted as a hard-hearted man his heart was so hardened God himself took him for a judgment in that part for a judgment God was also going hardening his heart to reveal this if your heart is hardened means you are going at the judgment you have to understand why you can't understand the state of the others you cannot take part the sorrow of others when you are getting some pain when others are also getting some same pain how they will feel whenever your heart is hardened you are going towards judgment immediately you have to fall in the feet of the law you have to ask the law give me a flesh Lord please give me a you have to sit and cry Lord take away my stony heart or hardened heart Exodus four twenty one his heart was hardened what happened because his heart was hardened he and the whole land was destroyed because of your orders of God your family should not go to the judgment some people reject the husband and some people reject the wife for what purpose it happened for what reason it happened they may say some whatever you may say that is a truth Matthew nineteen eight you can see Moses also gave you permission because of your hardness of God he wanted to push out your wife if your heart is not correct because we talk about your husband is not correct and your wife is not correct I no need her like that you go and see you go and ask the story of each and every family how much problem they are also going very happily because of the hardness of the heart only they want to push away the husband or wife that comes because of that only Jesus rebuked them the gospel of Mark that chapter fifth verse because of the hardness of the God God grieved them why because of the hardness of the God Jesus rebuked them God grieved with that anger he talked started talking two hours later because they want to accuse them whenever you want to accuse them your heart is also hardened the accusing spirit is a spirit of devil if you take a believer to judge Jacob you will also say every matter you are asking the preacher everybody we will preach that Jacob is not correct yes cheater his brother yes cheater his father yes cheater his uncle we will go on talk like the if you take Jesus to God to sit on the throne within one word you will say I did not see any iniquity in Jacob I am delivered by him if you are seated in the same throne one third a man was given life sentence for two hundred and fifty how long whether he will live for the two hundred and thirty six within forty or sixty years he will be going to die for all the mistakes he has done two hundred and thirty six years if we give the judgment to Jacob they will take to below that bottomless which a second judgment close within a second judgment was closed he will release and go if you take the husband or wife to the judgment they will kill them it is wrong they wanted to find fault with him and I want to accuse him Jesus rebuked them and because of the hardness of the God you want to with a motivation to find if you have the hardness of God you cannot feel anything mark six fifty two they couldn't understand or realize anything because of the hardness of the if we speak about the Calvary whatever speak if they have the hardness of God nothing will end on him the doctors will be the great serving of wine nowadays not so if you take them we are shouting because you got the beating or a wounding when you have to they can't realize or feel the pain of the they they the patient has to go on shout they will be looking on their work likewise if you also can't understand the pain of the other people the heart is hardened Jesus rebuked the hardness of the heart if anybody having the hardness of the heart if you are having the hardness of the heart you are going towards if you are having the hardness of God you will also try to accuse others if you have the hardness of God you cannot understand the truth seeing me start like that means he is an unbeliever but the spirit of God talked with me what I have what is found in my mouth means he is a believer a believer purposely he has talked for me means the hardness of God I think myself how many times I was also for somebody when I pray whether he will get the healing or not like that I also at night two o'clock they are bringing one child they are saying the child is there but I could feel that her mouth was somewhat it was the first child the child was dead but I said it is alive how it would be what is there any way to so we should be very careful our unbeliever as well as the hardness of heart will take us to the you have to take the Lord has talked to me to sanctify my life at the end of this year God rebuked the hardness of the heart and the you have to understand the word the rebuking by calling and telling simply it is it is not you can't understand that if you simply call and tell it is not you can't understand so what he will do so he rebuked it he called and shouted that is Pedro Jesus rebuked Peter Pedro Jesus was saying to Jesus it should not happen to you he took Jesus and rebuked him Jesus again rebuked him go behind me Satan our people want to control Jesus Jesus is not winding when Jesus came to the graveyard of the lausseress and shed tears why you have to cry now you could also make him to alive now if our people pastor TV or message you so possibly you should say you have to forgive others as well as God he has given to him and not to me you be in the child you struggle and forgive even the situation changes you have to ask the forgiveness who we are to accuse him and what other things in the place the God has to say he will say how many times God rebuked you how many times how many times your husbands called you how many times the elders rebuked you and peteriyekadina often one who is rebuked he is not caring he is also without any help fallen after the procession from Karakudi I came when he was returning there was an accident one boy was one another one was bruised was unconscious the accident was upon near the city those people said just before they died they both drunk they were they said go mind your work within the third minute of that adikkadik often you will be rebuked within one minute you will get the judgment the same time they may call me and separately and tell me can you see have you seen somebody like they have to say within four people you could separately talk to me now if I call separately and even beaten by the these are the practical speech of Tamil Nadu what the Bible says what the Bible says one first Timothy five twenty tawaru singitana matthangalukadu puriyano velangano abdingirukaga rebuked before all before in front of everybody you have to rebuked them we shouldn't call him separately whatever you done is correct the right place we have to make him to stand there is no adjustment work here do you know what is the thread what is the law he stood upon the wall which is according to the plummet it is built we don't have that way we cannot build it in as a sinner is rebuked like the righteous man also we rebuke do you understand this as a sinner how we are rebuking a good believer also is very rebuked yes no let the righteous man knock at me last week one boy came one boy reported me I did not do anything I was simply said one boy reported me I did not do anything I was simply said I did not know anything I did not do anything he said he only did the mistake but he knocked the rebuking is also difficult for everybody but so the scripture says thith one thirteen aroki mulalai mara you have to rebuked the stern league they should be with the sense of Aaron brought the profane fire and they died because of the Aaron sat in the corner the sacrifice which was set on the altar was bigger Moses came to the spot what happened the offering became their action why you didn't correct it what I have to do the two children were died only the offering is very important the believer has to stand in the faith as you should want them correctly immediately we call the believer it is not the ground ariela neerima neerima any day why day why neerimuli ariela daya the righteous man kindly rebuked me let it be an oil to me because somebody because many of them gone away from the rebuking is also necessary whenever your children are also not rebuked and left the master like they bring the right manner you have to want them and correct I'm known I'm known David well finally what did he do he was a skill but Absalom was Absalom chasing the if you in the place where you have to go on and rebuk if you rebuk in another place there is no use so in the matter of the youth people we are taking the very tough there is no mercy or anything we have to rebuk them well